Royal, are you okay? City Manager O'Toole?
Yep.
Okay, very good. I'd like to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:01 PM. Members present this evening are council members, CEO, Del Orco, Girba, Rice, Mayor Protem, Dylan, and myself, Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have City Manager O'Toole, City Clerk Royal, Waste Water Treatment Superintendent Briggs, along with some other staff members and some external consultants. We actually need a motion to approve the agenda as distributed. That's not articulated on my agenda, but we need to make that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Girba to approve the agenda as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as provided signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have and the motion carries unanimously. By this point, I'm sure you've all seen the email from our council colleague, Mr. Kamara Sulek. He will be absent from both the work meeting and regular meeting. So at this time, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to excuse his absence.
So moved.
Moved by Girba again and seconded by CEO. All those in favor of excusing the absence, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have and the motion carries unanimously. We come now to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments this evening regarding wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation bids? There appear to be none in the audience. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written communiques in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time? Easy enough. Then we transition to the one and only discussion item, which is wastewater treatment rehabilitation bids. City Manager O'Toole, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. Later tonight, we will consider two bids award for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Prior to us, considering that award, I wanted the opportunity to outline once again just what we've done, what we've accomplished to get to this point, what we originally anticipated the project funding to look like, what bid alternates we considered in that process, and then as part of our ongoing commitment to managing and assessing our risks, just risks assessments associated with moving forward with the project. So as far as background, obviously, this is a project we have been working on extensively for now, really, the last three years. The 2020 study kicked it off with identifying that we would remain at the current location and expand in place. At that time, that did appear to be the most cost-effective solution. Obviously, costs have changed dramatically over the last three years. What we anticipated to be around 76 million full-scale project back then was increased just for Phase One to be 62 to 65, and now we are seeing Phase One, which is really the non-growth-related portion of improvements, is up to about 81 million. Now, 30 million of that, approximately 3 million of that, are costs that we've already incurred related to expenses, professional services, studies, and design engineering for the project. We also know a lot more now about what we hope to achieve in terms of outside financing. We have 6.2 million in principal forgiveness. The state has earmarked dollars for us, and it does appear that the federal government will have earmarks for us, though the exact amount associated with the federal earmark isn't yet known. So that financing gap is closer, at least to the 65 million that we had originally anticipated the project coming, Phase One of the project coming in at, but the exact amount will, the financing gap will likely be between 64.8 and 68.8 million, depending on where that federal support comes in at. We are approved for up to 65 million in financing through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Act, and it is the city's recommendation that if we are moving forward, that that is absolutely the very best financing source that we can go after. The 2.125% interest rate on a 30-year loan is something that the market cannot compete with, and that equates to tens of millions of dollars in terms of cost savings for the project over the life of it. We're grateful. Many communities that we saw only received one bid when they went out for their SRF projects, we received at least two, and they were from two highly qualified firms. Both scored very well for our responsible contractor policy, and ultimately, we determined that Kokozian was not only the lowest bidder, but the highest scoring for our responsible contractor policy. Of the bid alternates the city considered, we had six in total. Most of them were actually very competitive prices, and we would recommend moving forward with two. The solar generator and demolition of the storage tank, sludge storage tank, we felt that the city could accomplish at a later date and possibly at a more cost-effective, particularly as it relates to the solar array. There are some additional grants or financing opportunities out there which may be geared more towards a project of that nature exclusively. All in all, we are estimating between that cost savings of at least 575,000 for not accepting the solar alternate. There may be another 1 to 3 million in value engineering we can do, and our consultant engineers at Tetra Tech have already identified some costs that they can shave off of the construction engineering side. So we do believe that we can hit the mark, getting back in line with about 65 million in total financing need for this project. As far as risks, I don't necessarily need to dive into every single one of these. I'll just kind of summarize through what we've done. We continue to look at how that project financing is impacting ratepayers. We do have Baker-Tilly working on the updated rate analysis. Again, with keeping the total financing component closer to 65 million, we still view what was produced previously as a worst-case scenario in terms of the impact on ratepayers in relation to this particular project, and we know now more about how growth-driven elements of this project would need to be assigned to future development and future new additions, residential equivalency units, and tying that to tap-in fees in the future. Certainly, a project of this magnitude, regardless of what path we ever took, was not going to be without risks. Operating a plant inherently is a risky endeavor. Emerging contaminants like PFAS are something that are changing consistently at the state level, regulations at the state level. We tend to get an idea of what's coming down the pipeline, but realistically, you can't plan indefinitely into the future with what that's going to look like. We do know that land-filling waste will cover at a cost, so while our biosolids plan incorporates new elements into the plant and new operating standards for the plant, either of those options is not without either the cost or the inherent risk of preventing pollutants in the future. And it does, if we are operating a wastewater system, require the city to continue to maintain its own industrial pollution prevention plan, so something that we have to take ownership of. And continued operation of the plant also is obviously going to require continued investment and improvements. We know that there's more than just the maintenance that has been formed to date. This isn't a one-and-done, and certainly, that's the kind of mentality that got us to the position that we're in today. So continuing to maintain a healthy outlook about operations and maintenance, valuing preventative maintenance, following the OMM schedule that we have created for the existing processes and the new processes that will come in line will be paramount for staff. We're very lucky in terms of the team that I think we have assembled here, not only Tetra Tech, but Arcadis, the staff that we have in place, and again, a highly qualified contractor, because there are risks inherent in performing these improvements as we continue to operate the plant. This isn't going to be turning one thing off and turning one thing back on. There'll be a real skill to enacting the sequencing of improvements as we move forward. Overall, the project is expected to reduce complaints, associated with foul orders especially, but again, in the nature of operating wastewater plants, we want to be very clear, one of the risks will always remain that there are natural odors associated with certain processes. We're also increasing the number of processes inherent in the plant from 1216, so again, that goes back to ensuring that we value preventative maintenance, we value operations and maintenance, ensuring that that manual is an actionable item for our staff will be essential. We do hope, though, that once these processes are fully operational, if we maintain them effectively, that this will free up staff time to focus on other activities of our system, including improvements to the pump station maintenance programs that we have in place now. Because we believe that every step of this process requires additional level of due diligence, we did look again at revisiting the benefits and challenges of regionalization. Those outcomes largely remain consistent with what we've seen in the past. There's certainly a decrease to the liability inherent in operating wastewater with the regionalization approach. Operations are simpler, the regulatory environment is less directly impactful to us, and the impact on neighbors is lower. However, for the total project cost of a project of that nature, the uncertainty around what financing grant would look like in a project of that nature, and a myriad of other unknowns at this time, there does still appear to be the same level of serious challenges to that alternative. Neither alternative from the very beginning was not without its merits, and the project path we are on now does outline how we can move forward with rehabilitation. So I'd welcome any questions to council. We do have a representative from Tetra Tech here today, wastewater staff, and city engineer Humphress.
Very good. Let me, excuse me, let me defer, first defer to staff. We have the Waste Water Treatment Superintendent here, the deputy director, and city engineer. Would any of you like to make a comment before I open it up for questions from my council colleagues? And I ask you, since there isn't a microphone at that table, I'd ask that you come to the podium and make sure that the green light at the base of the microphone is illuminated before you speak.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. Just the fact that hopefully, we don't trim anything that you guys might consider fat, because I don't think we have anything that really is fat, other than maybe the solar system itself. So everything else, we either need or will need potentially before the project's complete. When we get to the point where we're working on the dome for the digester, that we may need to do something different with our biosolids, and if we can, if we have the screw press installed already, we can manage to move on without having any days where we have to really struggle to handle solids. But as I say, this is a comprehensive plan. I think we've covered all our bases, and I think that when this is done, you guys will be smiling big smiles.
Let me, you began your comments with a statement that I think was rather profound, and I know that the issue will come up and council will be questioned on the cost of this project in the ensuing months and years. So again, just for the record, Mr. Briggs, and you've been doing this type of work for three decades plus now? Is that correct?
Certain amount of time, yes.
Okay. This project, this rehabilitation initiative, excuse me, has been evaluated, reevaluated, looked at by numerous parties and individuals with various expertise. It does come at a high cost, but in your judgment, there is not excess fat. Everything that is being proposed and recommended is absolutely essential.
Yes, I do believe that.
Very good. Okay, thank you. You may take your seat for the moment. Mr. Ruble, would you care to make any comments before we open it up for any questions? And then I'll extend that same invitation to the rest of our guests.
Well, I will be very brief. Mizal Toole did a wonderful job summarizing where we got to tonight. Couple things about the bidding environment, and if you read my letter, I think it communicated that quite well. It was challenging, to say the least. Eight, 10 municipal water wastewater projects bid in June, and so there was great competition for good general contractors and the trades, their subcontractors. At one time, we had five to eight interested. We dropped down to two at the end, but the two that we ended up with, I did check references, and was nothing but glowing on either contractor. So I feel good about the bids that we got, and as Mizal Toole said, many communities that we were competing with, the bids were perhaps double what their estimate was. Projects are being canceled, not proceeding, cut dramatically. So to end up where we were and so close to our cost opinion, I was very encouraged by. So I think that was good. And again, I will say that the representatives from Kokozian Industrial here tonight, so as we go on, if you wish to speak to them, I think they'd be more than happy to say a few words about themselves or their company. So that's all ahead, so.
Very good. That's an excellent recommendation, Mr. Ruble. Gentlemen, would you mind coming to the podium and introducing yourselves and telling council and the community a little bit about your company and your history of working on projects of this magnitude?
Good afternoon, council. My name's Todd Scherig. I've been with Kokozian for 23 years. This is Ryan Miller. He's going to be the PM on the project, and this is Trevor Fournier. He's a regional, he's working on a couple of jobs up here in Michigan for us, a lot of experience right here sitting in the crowd. Our company's been doing wastewater projects for over 50 years, and the company's over 70 years old, too. And these are the kind of projects, when we reached out to Brian, and he started solicitation for this project, we knew this was a job for us, because we love these hard, complicated projects. We love working with municipalities to get through these complex projects. The memorandum you wrote, Manager O'Toole, was really great. It's really brought up a good point about maintenance of plant operations. It's very important to work with the plant staff, get all these processes lined up, how you swap them over, how you do bypass pumping, how you put in bulkheads, how you swap out equipment as needed. It's a very intricate process. We're very experienced at it. We meet with staff daily, weekly on projects, just to make sure all that stuff's mapped out. We're very excited to work with you guys on this project, so thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. And last, we have a friend from OHM here. Do you care to make any comments this evening? No, very good. We appreciate your attendance. I will open it up for questions. I'll give you each five minutes to start, and I think we'll have time for a second and perhaps third round as well. I'm going to begin tonight to my right and end to my left, so council member CEO, I will start with you. You'll have five minutes, and please direct your questions to a specific individual if you suspect that a specific individual is best equipped to address whatever concerns you may have.
I guess I'd have my first question, Mr. Briggs. Sorry to make you get up again, Bill.
Can I stop you real quick, and then you can proceed with your question, and I'll stop the time. Either Clerk Royal or Mr. Goodman, can we get the side table here a microphone so that they're not coming up to the podium every time a question is asked? We have three people at the table that are likely going to be asked questions, and I think for the sake of moving this along at a, well, something better than a glacial pace, it would be best to have a microphone at that table. Thank you. But please proceed, Mr. Seal.
It's a comprehensive project, as you've stated. A lot of parts and pieces have to be balanced, one against the other. I guess the question is just, do you feel you're up to the task?
Well, I certainly hope so. I feel that between myself and Craig, that the Assistant Superintendent, we bring with us enough experience and know-how to be able to facilitate this. It's going to take some work on everybody's part, not just ours, but the, you know, the operators, too, on top of the engineers and the construction company. Like the gentleman said before, we're probably going to be meeting with somebody daily about almost everything that's going on there. So it's, we all have a good idea of where we want to end up. It's just making sure that we get there the right way.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And for the gentleman from Kokozian, I see you're from Ohio. You don't have any trepidation about coming to Michigan to do the work, do you?
No, sir. Actually, I'm from North Carolina, so it's great up north, and I don't have a problem with it at all.
Okay, just a tongue-in-cheek question.
Anything else, Mr. Seal?
No, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Protem Dylan, you have five minutes, and for the microphone at the side table there, sometimes there's some feedback if there's a cellphone or electronic device close to the microphone. So yes, please make sure you have your cellphones in your lap for the remaining hour. Mayor Protem Dylan, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Just a couple of very high-view questions. Will this project, once we're done, will this ensure that we're going to meet our permits on a regular basis? Are we still going to, is that always going to be an issue for us, or will processes change and we'll be better at reaching our permits or not exceeding the issue?
I believe that, I believe that the permits will become less of an issue. They've become less of an issue in the last year and a half since I started. We still have flips every once in a while. Potentially, things happen, power outages and/or pieces of equipment failing, but aside from that, I see no reason why we shouldn't have. Be to the point where my goal would be to cut back on testing for seven days to five days to let you back to work with the plant. So I believe that we can do that, and that everything, the way the plant's going to be set up, I think we'll have, I won't say easier, but at least a more consistent operation.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that. My next question is actually probably going to be on the staff side. Away from the plant, it's more about the dollars and what the impact, how is this going to impact our residents? What are we going to see for rate increases on top of the rate increases that we just put into place? What's the timeframe for that? And then the last part of that question is, what is our vision of, what do we need to grow as a community to support this system? Because it obviously can't just be perpetually on the backs of the current residents.
Certainly. So we will, we do anticipate having the final updated rate study, now that we know the numbers associated with this project, back from Baker-Tilly within the next few weeks. We've already met, provided them the information that they need to start working on that. Again, it has long been staff's goal internally that what we presented previously to the community be a worst-case scenario. So I would like to hold off on committing any specific rate impact, but looking back at that assessment from 2022, about early 2022, I believe is when we completed it, that called for in year two of this operation a roughly 25% increase. We do not want to have to see that happen again on the wastewater side. We would love to get to a point where we have more normal increases throughout the duration of this project. And to your point, Mayor Protem Dylan, the pie is as big as the pie is. So the more residents that we have, the more ratepayers in the system that we have, the smaller that share becomes for everyone else.
Thank you very much. Mayor, I'll stop there.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Girba, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. When we talk about operational aspects, do we understand what our new cost to run the new facility will be compared to what it is now, and have those been taken into consideration for our rate assessments?
So we will, the rate assessment will look at specifically chemicals, energy, and labor costs associated with the new plant. But we are committed to updating that rate study annually through the term of this, so really, we're kind of taking it one year at a time in terms of what the impact's going to be. Obviously, the biggest impact on rates is the debt service. The debt service is really what moves the needle in terms of costs to ratepayers associated with this project. So annually, as the project progresses, we would expect to come up with new figures associated with the operating site, but yes, the rate does consider both operations and capital costs and debt service.
I guess my question really is, when we look at our new operations, because RBCs were at one point very cost-effective in terms of energy use and so forth, now we're looking at our new plant, have we, in our plans, besides the solar energy, which was one idea, effectively brought in enough technology and whatever to address those unknown costs which are always increasing, like energy and chemicals? So you believe our, this new process and the system going to accomplish that?
I don't, I don't believe we can say definitively that this new, that this project will reduce energy costs. That's why we would continue to try and identify whether there were any grant opportunities to help us offset the solar array. What we did know is from the cost that was in this particular bid, it was not cost-effective to move forward with the solar at that time, because the lifecycle cost, return on investment, was equivalent to or greater than the cost of the units themselves.
And then one other couple of questions regarding the $1 million, I guess, or whatever the cost I noticed that could be deducted for the maintenance building. I believe we need all these facilities, but is there any ability to adjust the type of materials or the structure that's being built to not necessarily be a concrete building versus a different type of material or something? Or is it?
I believe the material we have selected for that building at the time is really as low-cost as we can possibly get. We could, we could consider a smaller footprint building, but keep in mind, we are eliminating an existing building. Really, we're eliminating and replacing an existing building. We're very landlocked at that location, so reducing the footage, the square footage of any facilities or reducing facilities in total does present a problem, so we would need to replace it with something. I anticipate that's the type of conversation, that along with things like whether it is feasible to rehabilitate the digester lid instead of replacing it, will be discussed as we enter into the contract to try and identify value engineering solutions with our selected contractor.
And then lastly, my one question would be regarding the wastewater treatment plan assessment group, or our advisory group has looked at this and discussed it, and we were even talking about, Arcadis has developed a, will be developing a vulnerability assessment to address concerns that could happen while we're going and transferring to our new system, operating our existing system, and those kind of things. So. So we look forward to that coming to be addressed. So that's one of the other things that I think is going to be assistance in helping control these costs and things as we go forward. I guess with that, I'll end my questions at this point.
Actually, I have a question for you, Mr. Girba. I appreciate you bringing up the last point. Can you remind council and the community, how often does the wastewater water treatment ad hoc committee, are you meeting twice a month at this point?
We, no, we actually meet once a month. Mr. Briggs and his crew have managed to fairly well address the order issues and concerns and been addressing things. We primarily are looking at the aspects of making sure that, you know, if issues come up out, they're being addressed and how to assess those, especially like the example that Ms. O'Toole will attest to this, working with the state to get them to get off their dime and get us our well approvals sooner than later. It's kind of those type of things that I think we've had more concerns about at this point from groups and pushing out. We met this morning again and talked about vulnerability issues, concerns that are going to be coming on board of just operational aspects right now that we know that we're going to be addressing and hopefully put in place before the actual plant can start.
Very good. Well, I wanted to ask that question for the record, because I think it's in the community's interest to know that, in addition to all the stakeholders who are present this evening who are involved in this project, we do have some additional individuals, not providing oversight, but providing the necessary support so that we can successfully complete this project. And in addition to yourself, and you obviously have vast knowledge on this particular operation and the city as a whole, we have a private individual with three decades plus of high-level risk mitigation experience, and then the newest member of our ad hoc committee comes with, I believe, nearly four decades of experience in wastewater services. He was formerly our consultant with Tetra Tech, Tom Alba, who lives in the community. So it's a solid group that has good perspective, and I think will continue to support operations in the ensuing years. If you have nothing further, Mr. Girba, then I'm going to move to Councilmember Del Oroco for five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the memo, Colleen, it's very well-written and helped me to frame, wrap my mind around a lot of what's going on here. I do see a particular emphasis drawn to the $65 million line of credit, if you will, provided by the State Revolving Fund, and the desire from leadership and staff to keep us at that number. And I want to make sure that we're not, the phrase "value engineering," I want to make sure that doesn't mean shortcuts and replacing quality materials with less quality, lower-quality materials that are going to give us problems in the long run and present a penny-wise and pound-foolish approach to this.
If I may, you present an excellent point, and I think Superintendent Briggs hit the nail on the head earlier. There is not a lot of fat in this project. I don't think we should expect to suddenly find a savings of five, six million dollars. But where it makes sense, we will identify opportunities to be cost-conscious, but we don't want to get into the situation that we've been in the past, where the city made decisions based on cost and cost alone that have since come back now, I believe, to cost the community more in the long run.
Right, and I'll give you an example, Rosebud. That pipe should never have gone in the ground, and there was reasons, other reasons, why it went in, but that ended up being a bad decision in the long run. Just the quality of the pumps and materials are going to be important for the longevity and keeping our operations costs at an expected level. And this digester lid is something that's received a lot of attention as a source of odor problems for the community. And I wonder if there's any of the experts from the contract side, or Mr. Rubel, if you could weigh in on how vital it is for us to replace that, or is that something that can realistically be deferred without consequence?
That cover also is 36 years old, and it's steel, and it's exposed to the weather, so it is showing its age. It noticeably deflects when you walk on it.
Right, right.
So it is certainly near the end of its useful life. I don't think anybody here can say it's going to fail in one month, or six months, or two years, but it doesn't have five years left, put it that way. So it is, yes, and I, yes, I think if it can't be done, this project, it needs to be programmed for something very, very near-term.
Okay, great. So then, we do have the option, correct me if I'm wrong in reading your memo, that if for whatever reason the cost drift slightly above 65 million, we can go to FY '24 for the State Revolving Fund to ask for additional funding if necessary?
Yes, so we already had an FY '24 application in for West Belt, because we're planning to do rehabilitation to the West Side Sanitary Sewer Line. We took the cost overruns associated with this project and added them to that application. And ostensibly, from what we've heard back from Eagle at this time, what we've submitted is satisfactory for them to now proceed with final scoring on that round of loans. Now, technically, we would need to score high enough to secure the loan, but the idea is that if this is a carryover of an existing project, ideally, our scoring should be more favorable in that case, and funding should be available for us.
Which do we expect to hear back from first on? That application scoring, or the amount in state and federal direct appropriations we'd be receiving?
Well, that's probably a neck-and-neck race, depending on, you know, the speed the feds moving at at this point. I believe that information came out mid to late August last year. So, I mean, as far as SRF scoring, we had a pretty good idea before the end of summer last year that we were getting these dollars. I have heard from our state senators that they were tossing around some numbers, so it sounds like things are moving at the appropriations level. But nothing officially yet.
Just, it sounds like we're within three or four million dollars of making the mark on the 65 million.
And we can, if we score sufficiently high in FY '24, we can move forward with starting to secure that loan. We are not committed, we could pick a later quarter. I mean, this is a three-year project.
Right.
You know, there's nothing that requires us to turn around and immediately say we need X number of dollars. We have, we have time to figure out what that need is going to be.
Okay, great.
Mr. Del Oroco, I'm sorry, we've passed the five-minute mark, so hang on to your questions. I will have time to come back to you. My apologies. Councilmember Rice, you have, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the contracting firm. Sorry, I think that's Kokosian. Yeah, nice, sorry. So, Mr. Rubel talked to us about how there are eight to 10 projects statewide that are of this size, possibly even bigger. Are you involved in any of those projects, or will you be?
I guess I'm not sure which ones he's referenced. We do have three or four projects in Detroit right now for the Great Lakes Water Association or Water Authority. We do have the project up at the Sioux Lox right now, so we do have some work going on in Michigan.
Okay, great. Are your, so are your, like, subcontractors going to be local, or are they going to be from here?
They will be from here, and our union locals, you know, we work with the union halls. Most of that labor will come from local.
Okay. And so just a general sense of the scope of projects that you all are currently working on, is there anything in your scope of projects that you could see that could defer some of the work that you're doing here for us? Is there anything that might be competing with our time for your services?
As far as detrimental, no, I would say not. You know, I mean, a complex project like this has an intricate sequence that it goes through, the purchasing, the final engineering, the detailing of the specific process equipment, you know, the approvals and review of the staff of the equipment that we've decided to go with in the bids. I think that as that intricate process moves forward, I mean, it can work in the timeline, I believe.
Do you still feel strongly that the timeline that was presented seems feasible to the work that you're currently doing?
Yes.
Or the work that you'll add on in the near future?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One more question that I had concerning the kind of alternates that you've provided here, Mr. Rubel. So I hear what Superintendent Briggs is saying, and I hear what my colleagues are saying. I just want to stress again, as some of my colleagues have already stressed, that we have run into some issues in the past here, Celine, where we looked at dollar figures and we said, okay, we're going to cut this out, we're going to cut that out. I feel very strongly about what you've been presenting us for the last couple of years and keeping this project intact to the best of our abilities with all of the changes that staff have pointed out that need to be made. As this process goes along, if there are additional things that come up, or have you thought of any additional things that could come up where we're working on something and we're like, oh, this, this new thing has arisen, and we really, while we're doing this, should tack this onto this project? Do you have any anticipation of that, anything like that? Built in any kind of leeway for those types of things?
Enhance, I'll put it in, it sounded like your first question was about enhancements, things to enhance, to make things better. There was certainly discussion of material selection and equipment selection during design. I think we ended up, you know, in the optimal spot. It made sense, the value that we're getting. We talked at some point about a fourth aeration train that would be ready for growth. We, you know, the costs were what they were, we knew that that probably would not make the cut, so that did not make it to the bidding phase. I guess I'll, I alluded to this in the letter a little bit. This is a working plant. It has been a working plant for a long time. There is an abundance of equipment and piping that has been abandoned at this plant, and unfortunately, in many cases, it's not well-documented where things are. So I am certain that during construction, we are going to encounter underground conditions that nobody could have foreseen, and we'll have to come up with workarounds for that, some of which may involve extra cost. So I'm not sure if I addressed--
No, that's okay. You're more eloquently stating what I was trying to state than I am. What I want for, is for the record, for our community members, that this is not the end-all, be-all. We will probably run into some things. When we run into some things, there may be some opportunities for, you know, additional enhancements, but there also--
Absolutely.
--could very well be opportunities where it's like we just have to get this thing out here.
And that's why I think next week, you'll consider a construction engineering proposal, because unfortunately, we can't just set the baby loose and it will go from A to B without oversight. There is oversight required, there are decisions we've carried along the way. So we will be there. Ms. O'Toole said something many meetings ago that I thought was spot-on, is there's a lot of complexity going on here. Hundreds of different vendors involved with supplying equipment, and we will have challenges with some of them. Some of them won't work the way we hoped they worked, or the vendor promised. And my commitment to you will be, we'll work through that and we'll get to the right point. I can't promise there won't be the challenges, I can only promise the effort and the result that we'll get to, so.
That's great, I appreciate that. I just wanted to note that on the record, that we're talking about this amount of money, this project, this scope, but things are going to come up.
Thank you both. We actually eclipsed the five minutes, but there will be an additional round for questions and comments. Before I jump to my colleague, Mr. Seal, to see if he has additional thoughts, City Manager O'Toole, tomorrow, Wednesday, will you send the obligatory email to our council colleague, Mr. Kaver Sulek, and follow up with him regarding this issue and address any questions he has? Hopefully, he'll be able to watch this meeting and review the material that was provided in the packet, but I want to make sure he's well-versed on the matter before we reconvene in late July.
Yes.
Very good. Councilmember Seal, do you have any additional questions? I'll give you another five minutes if you'd like it.
No questions, just a comment that I have faith in the team that we've assembled, the engineering firm, our staff that we now have here, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and our city engineer, and I trust that this thing will move forward. I know I've managed some large projects in my past, things that I approach with a certain degree of trepidation, so I know the kinds of things you're talking about when you say that something will surely arise that we're not considering at this moment. But I have faith that we have a team in place that'll work through it, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Very good. Mayor Protem Dillon, another five minutes for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Excuse me, this will be probably for the city manager, just to confirm that the city will not be accepting waste from outside services. At one point, we, there was talk of that as an offset for costs, but that's not something that we feel as though is going to actually be lucrative.
Correct. We view sludge receiving as more of a risk than a potential opportunity for us at this point in time.
Okay, just to put that out there. And then the other comment I just wanted to make was that, as we talk about, you know, additions, subtractions, changes, things like that, I just want to be mindful that we shouldn't be armchair engineers. There's a reason that we sit here, they sit there, that they have certain experiences that we don't. So I have all, all the faith I can in our experts, in our consultants, in our staff, that they know what equipment we need and to what specs it needs to be. Granted, I'm sure I'll ask questions about it, but I will say that I'm not going to make those kind of recommendations. It's just, it's beyond the scope of my knowledge base.
Very good, thank you very much. Councilmember Girba, you have another five minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you. Just a couple items, and this is probably for Manager O'Toole. As we talked about, you know, projects and a number of projects going on in this state, we built into our contracts penalties and incentives in order to meet certain milestones and deadlines, correct?
Yes, this contract would have liquidated damages associated with it, and we do have a strict timeline in terms of when we need all of the processes associated with the plant to go live.
And we don't anticipate any aspect in this contract where there's a material escalation clause or anything like we had with that transformer?
Want to address that, Mr. Rubel?
Yeah. No, it is a lump-sum contract. So the general contractor has worked with their vendors and suppliers to negotiate firm pricing, so.
And then the other one, I did like the fact that Mr. Rubel mentioned about contractual services. What my concern and question was going to come up is, do you feel that we, as, we are staff sufficiently to run this plant, to manage the conversion and work the construction project, and have the contractors here so that there's enough people to do the work that needs to be done?
We have already talked about kind of front-loading one additional staff position in anticipation of a future retirement to help us for the early part of this transition period. I don't know that we have anything else additional planned beyond that, but yes, it is potential we'll be up one staff person for a period of time directly in relation to this project.
And I just, from my perspective, I'd like to encourage whatever you need to do that, because we do know that recruiting is difficult and to get the proper person.
I believe that job posting is out right now, and we have started to receive applications, so.
Excellent, thank you, gentlemen.
Easy enough. Councilmember Del Oroco, you have another five minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you. Just a couple more things. You mentioned the State Revolving Fund debt service is the biggest, broadest impact on the operation cost to the city. So I just want to be clear, I understand that the 2.125% interest rate is locked in for the life of the loan, the entire 30 years--
Yes.
--if we are to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, that's very helpful to understand. And then, I, in the grand scheme of things, the cost savings for eliminating the solar array panel, while not an insignificant amount of money, around half a million, in the grand scheme of the project, it doesn't really put much of a dent into helping us mitigate the increase in the bids from when the project was originally projected. Is that an opportunity for us to, you talked about grants, can we bundle that in with things we're considering in other areas of the city, for example, EV chargers in parking lots and other solar arrays in those grant projects? Or do we have to keep these mutually exclusive?
It really depends on the nature of the grant. You know, every federal and state grant opportunity has its specific scope, its specific activities that it's willing to fund. Certainly, if there's something that was in relation to a broader energy-saving endeavor, we could package this with that. The sentiment is just that it's the type of standalone project that could be accomplished on its own, and we believe if, you know, given the amount of staff resources and time that was going into just getting this project to-- that was going into just getting this project to the point it is, with a little bit more staff, time, and attention, we could identify suitable funding opportunities for that.
Right. And I certainly appreciate if it's, the return on investment isn't there, it doesn't make sense to move forward with, but if it's bundled in with other projects in the city, maybe there's a grant funding opportunity there.
Yeah.
I also just want to make sure that, I assume when we applied to the State Revolving Fund, that that was included as part of the projection and the engineering. Did that help us get a better score in any way? Are we likely to suffer any consequences as a result of removing it?
No, I don't believe, I mean, the majority of our scoring was tied to the administrative consent order that we have in place.
Okay.
And the fact that the processes, the improvements that we're outlining here will get us to much more regularly meeting our NPDES permit limits.
Fantastic, that's all I have, thank you.
Very good. And last, but certainly not least, Councilmember Rice, you'll have an additional five minutes if you'd like it.
Just a quick statement, I'd like to echo my colleague, Mayor Protem Dillon, in that I feel like we have been well informed throughout this entire process. Myself, as a newbie on council, I've been easily able to answer, get questions answered. All of the materials have been very thorough, very well spelled out for us, that we understand what we're trying to accomplish here. So I feel very confident that when we make a decision, we have been given the best information possible, and I feel confident in this team.
Very good, thank you very much. City Manager O'Toole, is there anything you'd like to add before we conclude this evening?
No.
Well, thank you for your work on this. In the event that council members have additional questions between now and any of our next regular meetings, please direct those through the city manager's office, and I'm sure she and her staff would be happy to accommodate and provide you with any information that she requests. If there's nothing further to be brought before council at this work meeting, the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:48, noting that we will start our regular meeting promptly at 7:00 PM.
So moved?
Moved by Mayor Prodylan to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Councilmember Del Orco. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, meeting is adjourned, thank you all, appreciate your attendance.
Colleen, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call the Saline City Council meeting to order. If you'd please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We would encourage you to sign in on the back table. There are also copies of the agenda and hearing devices if you require them. Members present this evening are council members C O., Del Orco, Girbaugh, Rice, Mayor Pro Tem Dillon, and myself, Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have the city manager, the city clerk, community development director, wastewater treatment superintendent. I don't believe the city engineer is with us anymore, and I don't believe the city treasurer is in attendance tonight either. At this time, the chairman entertained a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
It was submitted.
Moved by C O. to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Girbaugh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to excuse the absence of our colleague, Mr. Kamir Sulek?
So moved.
Moved by Girbaugh to excuse the absence. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by C O. All those in favor of excusing the absence, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make common or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments from those in the audience this evening? The record will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written communiques in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time? Easy enough. Then we will transition to the first of two presentations, and I will begin with my charter sanctioned State of the City address. My friends, good evening. City Council, City Manager O'Toole, Clerk Royal, distinguished guests, and my fellow Salineans. It is an honor to provide the citizens of Saline a more abbreviated mid-year update. As I expressed in January, I am still confident that 2023 will be remembered as a year of progress and productivity. To begin, I'm pleased to report that the Saline delegation had a wonderful visit to Lindenburg, Germany, one of our two municipal sister cities. Our hosts were gracious and hospitable. The delegation celebrated our now 20-year relationship with Lindenburg, and we are hopeful that the partnership, excuse me, will endure for years to come. Second, based on preliminary numbers, the 2023 Saline Celtic Festival was a tremendous success. Public participation far exceeded 2022 numbers, and revenue for both Friday, July the 7th, and Saturday, the 8th were in excess of $100,000. It appears that the change in venue was a prudent move, indicative that all events and organizations must evolve and change if they are to remain viable and on a sustainable trajectory. Regarding public safety, the Saline Police Department is eager to integrate a new officer into the school liaison role, which will occur later this summer. The PD is also looking for additional talent. If individuals are interested, they are encouraged to connect with Police Chief Marlene Radzik or our Human Resource Office. Last, I can confirm, after speaking with Chief Radzik earlier today, in light of all the construction activity and citizen inquiries, traffic enforcement will be increasing in the weeks and months ahead. Further, the Saline Area Fire Department has completed a very thorough and successful risk mitigation analysis and will soon initiate a strategic planning process to help ensure, excuse me, that the Saline Area Fire Department will effectively meet the needs of our community in the ensuing decades. Now pertaining to economic development and business attraction, while our city has added approximately one new business per month since late 2022, filling all of our existing vacant storefronts and office suites will be a key priority for us in the remaining months of 2023. Additionally, staff will be visiting every local business in the next two to three months to establish a point of contact and to better understand the issues and concerns of our local enterprises. In this vein, along with the Saline Area Chamber of Commerce and the Saline Main Street, the city will be hosting our annual Small Business Summit in late August. Also, the city is in the final stages of our master plan revisioning process, with a final town hall scheduled for July 27th at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. It is my sincerest hope that residents and business owners will attend and provide feedback. Their insights will help guide growth, development, and the preservation of green space for the remainder of the decade. The Clark Street resurfacing project is nearing completion. Substantial completion is expected in the next two to three weeks. In the fall of this year, after nearly three years of studies and planning, rehabilitation of our city's wastewater treatment plant will finally begin. Construction is expected to start slowly, but will be very active through 2024 and 2025. This project is by far the most sizable capital undertaking in our city's history. Due to its size and scope, we do expect there to be inconveniences experienced by residents in the immediate adjacent areas. Our goal is always to maintain clear and consistent and open communication about the project's status and any expected inconveniences. We strongly encourage residents who are interested to subscribe to updates on this project using the city's new capital improvement project tracking tool, ClearGov. The link can be found on the front page of our city's website. Further, I'm thrilled to announce that the Michigan State budget covering fiscal year 2024 includes a $5 million supplemental specifically for the rehabilitation of our wastewater treatment plant. As mentioned previously, we are also seeking federal funds to assist with this vital initiative. The city is continuing progress on the East Belt Sanitary Sewer Project to improve the reliability of service to thousands of residents and businesses on the east side of our community. The project requires extensive and very deep excavation along Maple Road. Closure of the roadway is expected to last through November of this particular year. We ask residents to be especially mindful of the detour routes as staff expects to update routes to excess facilities, such as the post office, as construction conditions change. The city is also actively working, excuse me, with our counterparts at Saline Area Schools to ensure that there is smooth access to the middle school when classes resume later this fall. The city recently adopted a new investment strategy to incorporate trusts and cash management, thus allowing public funds to be invested with liquidity earnings at the highest rate of interest. The result of this transition and other economic factors have increased the city's interest earnings from 250 K in the prior year to 1.34 million for 2023, a 1.09 million or 525% increase. This allows the city to achieve our objective in preserving principle and maintaining the appropriate level of liquidity. The city of Saline is honored to announce that our bond rating from S&amp;P Global increased to AA+. In today's environment, rating upgrades are very uncommon. This increase demonstrates how well city finances are managed. AA+ rating is excellent and falls only below a AAA rating, signifying that the issuer is financially sound and has revenue of cash reserves to pay down existing debts. In summation, we strongly encourage residents to connect with the city of Saline online and on social media. Please use our online reporting tool and visit ClearGov for more specific project updates. Further, please note that in the coming months, the city will be launching a new account on Nextdoor, allowing citizens to engage with municipal officials on yet another online platform. Finally, my office will be hosting my 10th Annual Saline Senior Conference on August the 18th at the Saline Area Senior Center. The event is open to all community residents 55 years of age or older. If you're interested in local issues or would like updates from regional or state officials, you should definitely plan to attend. Our RSVPs can be made directly to the Saline Area Senior Center. Let me end by acknowledging the years of service and the innumerable contributions made by my council colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem Janet Dillon, Members Jack C O., James Del Orco, Kevin Kamir Sulek, Dean Girbaugh, and Nicole Rice. Also, let me acknowledge our very dedicated and talented staff who care deeply for this community and provide exceptional service to our residents on a daily basis. We thank each of you. Our community would not be the world-class city it is without your commitment and contributions. My friends, rest assured, this community will continue to experience hardships and challenges, but our renewed focus on core municipal services, investing in our infrastructure, strengthening public safety, while pursuing best practices for organizational efficiency will undoubtedly improve our quality of life. I've said it before, Saline is a very special place, and I continue to believe that our best days are yet to come. Thank you, God bless you, and may God bless Saline. We are going to move right along on our agenda this evening, and we come to our second presentation, which is an update from the City of Saline Environmental Commission. I would invite the leadership of the Environmental Commission to the podium. Councilmember Del Orco as liaison, you're welcome to join them, or you may remain at the dais, but we would welcome some thoughts from you at the conclusion of the commission's remarks. If you would introduce yourselves for the record, that would be tremendous.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Thomas, the Chair of the Environmental Commission.
Bruce Westlake, last year's Chair.
Hi, I'm Jen Harmout. I'm Vice Chair of the Environmental Commission.
Very good. And as I noted, Mr. Del Orco is the council liaison.
Yes.
Please proceed. We appreciate you all being.
Thank you. So this is our annual report for 2022. For those that don't know, the Saline Environmental Commission is a group of appointed citizens. We share a vision of educating and advising residents on a variety of environmental topics. We also seek to collaborate with the city and recruit volunteers to participate in environmental activities and advocate for ideas in sustainability and conservation of resources for the city of Saline. So for most of 2022, our chairperson was Bruce Westlake. Jim, as stated, is our city liaison. Chris Schonck regularly attends our meetings as well. He's our recording secretary. I myself was a member since October. Jen Harmout is here, Claire Warden, Al Hodge, and Carrie Papa. Then the remainder of, I believe it was October, but in 2023, I became officially the chairperson. And then Jen became the vice chair. She's my Veep. And pretty much everybody else is the same. We had the same members. We added Larry Sills because he's regularly been attending our meetings so that we can coordinate with him on waste management concerns, which has been very helpful and productive. So here's just a summary of our activities. Trash and recycling, we keep a pretty sharp eye on this so that we can advise residents on where they can go for certain things. Sometimes these resources do change, so. Basically, we recognize a substantial need for city residents to learn more about improving their recycling practices. This is again something we're working with Larry on. We track how much tonnage and such is being recycled, and you'll see that slide a little bit later. Here we go. So these are our numbers for 2022, what was diverted from the landfill. Again, we're tracking this. There's some talk about how we're going to improve that in the future. So I think we'll have more of that in our 2023 report. Community collection, again, this is just information we like to put out, what things are being recycled through City Hall, places around town where they can do that. And new efforts being made to implement recycling at Saline events. This is something we've really focused on in the last year. We did implement it at Summerfest and Oktoberfest this past year, and we have them committed for this year as well. So we really diverted a lot of recyclable materials. We worked with the event planners, and for Summerfest, we diverted 291 pounds of recyclable material from landfill. In Oktoberfest, we diverted 541 pounds. So we're going to be working with the Celtic Festival for 2024. We did not get an opportunity to work with them for this year, but we have talked with them and trying to implement it at their new location, which has been a little bit of a challenge being now that they're outside of the city. But they seem to be willing, so we're going to work on that. And we're hoping our numbers increase as the years go on that we can divert more material. Another big thing we accomplished this year was the vendor guidelines. This is a two-page document. I'll just go right to it so everybody can see. It's a two-page document that we now have included with every event vendor that wants to sign up. They will get this in their package. And it basically tells them how they should manage their waste at their event. So we have certain things, like the polystyrene that are prohibited, and just them knowing that they need to work with a recyclable vendor and hopefully answers all of their questions. And then we leave our contact information in case they have any questions.
Did you have anything to add tonight?
No.
No?
Okay. And of course, we have a list of our best management practices for them. So this has been pretty successful so far. Like I said, the two major events we have have been really successful with this, so. Last year, we partnered with the Washtenaw County Solid Waste Division in July, and we had a very successful cleanup day. We see our numbers there, 9,500 pounds of scrap tires, 35,000 bulky waste. All of this was collected. So a total of 115,000 pounds from residents. So I would say that would be a success. And I'm going to turn it over to Bruce to talk about the electric vehicle events, since this was kind of his spearheading.
Yep. We held two electric vehicle events this year. We're going to continue to do that again next year. During Summerfest, we hold an event downtown. And then we hold one at Ace Hardware, just outside of town. We're looking at a third one that will be in Ann Arbor at Myers. And here's some pictures from our Summerfest, the electric vehicle Summerfest version, over 100 people attended. And then there's Junga's Ace Hardware, which is the other event that we did around Earth Day. So. Then we've been working on updating the chargers. The charger that was originally installed downtown was in the first two years of electric vehicle charging, and it's aging out. So there's wear on it, and we're looking at new designs and the possibility of extending how many heads we can offer downtown and in other locations.
Okay. So again, we're really focusing on our public information shares this past year and this coming year. So because of COVID, some of our events and some of our outreach got a little bit dampered. So we're trying to ramp up our presence out there. We're going to be at the farmer's market twice at the end of this month. Fortunately, we wanted to be there a little bit more, but I guess there's not a lot of room, so that's great. They're very successful with a lot of vendors. But we're going to try to squeeze in there as much as we can, share information about, you know, waste management, recycling, just getting ourselves out there. A lot of people, when we went over the winter, didn't even realize there was an environmental commission and was a group of people that, you know, they could ask questions like this about. So we just want everybody to realize that we're here, and we're happy to answer questions. We also are updating our website currently right now. We, you know, just share, again, same information, how to save water, energy, recycle. But this is an area we're focusing on this year. We're going to update the website. We have significantly increased our Facebook presence, and we're working on social media sharing and getting our information and presence out there. So that's been a big success so far. And this is just an example of a recent Facebook post that we had. You know, again, just information on what not to put in the recycle bin. So as much as we can try to minimize the decontamination of the waste stream or the contamination of the waste stream, the better for waste management.
Sure. On that last slide, so we went to the MRF, and one of the main contaminating factors was people actually bagging up their recycling, and that was causing what they call contamination. So that would immediately go into the landfill. So that would be something like we're talking about on community education. So example of that.
Yeah, and I did want to thank Sarah Massey for her support in our social media and city website as well. She's been a big help and always available with our questions and getting back to us. So that's great. And then we just have our financial projection. Wanted to point out that we didn't spend a whole lot this past year, but it was mainly due to a reduced amount of events that we had, you know, kind of crawling back from COVID. But we do want to ramp that up for this year and next year. We have visions of having a green fair, bringing back some, you know, recycling events, things like that. So I added this requested budget column so that we can kind of give you a projection of what we would like to have. Because I think we got a reduced budget because we didn't spend much last year. But this is basically what we spent our money on this year. A lot of it was outreach items. We handed out recyclable bags, just, you know, schwag, if you will, from the environmental commission. And we printed a bunch of waste management recycling cards to hand out to people. Everything we gave out at the farmer's market was really well received, and people seemed to be glad to have the information. So we'd like to be able to continue to offer that. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Del Orco, before we open it up for questions from the dais, do you have any comments you'd like to make as liaison of the Environmental Commission?
I'd just like to thank all the members of the Environmental Commission. From my perspective, the group has made significant strides in this past year in terms of raising awareness and making traction and getting our community events to hold themselves accountable to using a vendor to supply services and recycle their waste. That is a significant step forward for the community, and as many community events that we can get to cooperate with those ideas is going to hold us in good stead. I would also like to highlight, as far as the budget's concerned, that historically, before the pandemic, we used to host an e-recycling waste event and shredding event right here in the city of Saline. And that has yet to resume since the pandemic. We're looking and brainstorming for ways to bring that back online. So that explains why we went from having a pretty good amount appropriated for our budget to not spending any of that money or spending very little of that money and then having it pulled back by the Treasurer's Office, which is appropriate. But in light of the fact that we'd like to bring that back to the community, that's the explanation for the request for additional funds, if we're able to do that.
Very good. I appreciate those remarks. And let me add, because I had a brief conversation today with the city manager about electric vehicle charging stations. It is my hope that we can sort of confirm a tentative plan by the end of this quarter regarding what technology we're going to use and the placement of additional charging stations, because I think it's imperative, especially as we see the trajectory and trend we're on with availability of electric vehicles and the fact that in 10 years, most of the major auto manufacturers are going to be producing mostly, if not all, electric vehicles. So we need to stay ahead of this curve, and at the moment, I think we're slipping a little bit behind. But that can be corrected. And like I said, by the end of this quarter, I hope that we can have a tentative plan to present to council and the broader community. Are there questions for our guests from the Environmental Commission this evening? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just a couple. You know, we always keep seeing on Facebook all the time about batteries. What's the best to do with our batteries again? If they're not lithium, chuck them in the trash and?
No.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to have that.
So, well, we had to be schooled also. So it changed. And the only thing you can do if you want to recycle.
Yeah, speaking of the microphone, Bruce, make sure the green light is illuminated.
If you want to recycle and make sure it doesn't end up in the landfill, then the only option you have is to take it up to Washtenaw County on Zieg Road. And they have to be separated, the lithium and alkaline batteries. There's no easy way, but that's what should be done right now.
So our recommendation is to continue to recycle them, not necessarily put them in the trash?
Yeah, there was a time when we got that recommendation from Washtenaw County that you throw them in the trash. And it was about a year, and then we found out that that's not the best way to handle them. And they're recommending now that they recycle even the alkaline batteries. Lithium definitely can be recycled, and the lithium can be recovered.
And then, you know, this last year, when we talked about our water rates and everything, we talked about water conservation. Have you all worked at any kind of efforts towards that and how we could publicize that kind of aspect?
Yeah, we've made a few Facebook sharings on conservation of water. We focused a whole week on it during Earth Month in April. So that's part of the outreach and education portion of it, definitely a conservation of water. So we've got a little handout that we do that talks about rain barrels and rain gardens and, you know, water catchment, rain catchment, things like that. And just, we handed out these four-minute shower timers, you know, just kind of bringing awareness. Most people laughed at a four-minute shower, but, you know, it's possible.
It's possible.
But it just gets people thinking. It's a fun little novelty. It kind of sticks right in your shower, but it's a good reminder, right? So we want to continue to do things like that to try to get people to think about that. But yeah, that's the majority of our Facebook sharings is about waste management, waste reduction, recycling. And I would like to, it would be nice if we could provide a battery recycle bin at some, you know, great central location in the city, but I don't know if that's, I feel like it used to.
We used to. We just didn't have anybody that could pick them up anymore.
Yes.
That was the problem. They ended up accumulating at DPW in multiple barrels. And then us on the Environmental Commission at the time volunteered to separate all those batteries from lithium versus alkaline and then drive them down to the Washtenaw County recycling facility. It was in the middle of winter, and I hope never have to do that again.
Okay, well, maybe now that they.
So, well, we had to be schooled also. So it changed and the only thing you can do if you want to recycle.
Yes, speaking of the microphone, Bruce, make sure the green light is illuminated.
If you want to recycle and make sure it doesn't end up in the landfill, then the only option you have is to take it up to Washtenaw County on Zieg Road. And they have to be separated, the lithium and alkaline batteries. There's no easy way, but that's, that's what should be done right now.
So our recommendation is to continue to recycle them, not necessarily put them in the trash? That's some of the recommendations.
Yeah, there was, there was a time when we got that recommendation from Washtenaw County that you throw them in the trash. And it was about a year and then we found out that that's not the best way to handle them. And they're recommending now that they recycle the, even the alkaline batteries. Lithium definitely can be recycled and, and the lithium can be recovered.
And then the other, you know, this last year, we talked about our water rates and everything. We talked about water conservation. Have you all worked at any kind of efforts towards that and how we could publicize that kind of a aspect?
Yeah, we've made a few Facebook sharings on conservation of water. We focused a whole week on it during Earth Month in April. So that's part of the outreach and education portion of it, definitely a conservation of water. So we've got a little handout that we do that talks about rain barrels and rain gardens and, you know, water catchment, rain catchment, things like that. And just, we handed out these four-minute shower timers, you know, just kind of bringing awareness. Most people laughed at a four-minute shower, but, you know, it's possible.
It's possible. I tried it myself.
But it just gets people, it just gets people thinking. It's a, it's a fun little novelty. It kind of sticks right in your shower and, but it's a good reminder, right? So we want to continue to do things like that to try to get people to think about that. But yeah, that's the majority of our Facebook sharings is about waste management, waste reduction, recycling. And I would like to, it would be nice if we could provide a battery recycle bin at some, you know, great central location in the city, but I don't know if that's, I feel like it used to.
We, we used to. We just didn't have anybody that could pick them up anymore.
Yes, okay.
That was the problem. Ended up accumulating at DPW in multiple barrels and then us on the Environmental Commission at the time volunteered to separate all those batteries from lithium versus alkaline and then drive them down to the Washtenaw County recycling facility. It was in the middle of winter and I hope never have to do that again.
Okay, well, maybe now that they, you know, are recommending we recycle again, maybe, maybe I'll reach out to them and see.
It would be one of those great things to talk with the whole recycling program that's happening with Washtenaw County that somehow we need to have a regional aspect to handle it. Or at least be places where we could drop off and then.
Because very few people will drive it to Zieg Road, let's be honest. Yeah, it would be nice to offer something, alternative, easier.
I agree.
Yeah. Great work.
Okay.
Mayor Protam Dillon, do you have some questions or comments?
I just had one following up on Mr. Gierba about recycling. There was one other thing is the Christmas lights, you know, when your holidays are merry, but they're not so bright. I also have toured the MRF and that is like one of the bane's of their existence is Christmas lights that are put into recycling because they get tangled around the equipment. We did use to collect them here. Is there any place that still does that? Is there a way in which people can recycle them?
Well, I think that's one of the things we talked about, bringing back these events where we can, you know, once or twice a year, have people bring these items to us. Yeah, I mean, we still have a whole big thing of them in the basement, I believe. I'm not sure what you guys did with that.
Yeah, we have a supplier in Jackson, I believe it's Jackson, that has been taking them and they don't actually, the supplier isn't in Jackson. I think they're out further than that. And what we have been doing in the past is we would meet them in Jackson, do a transfer of bags of lights and then, and then they would take them. So it's kind of a tenuous connection and the stores that used to take them, like Lowe's and Home Depot, don't take them anymore. So we've, we'll just have to, we have to go at the end of the year and see who's willing to take them. Last year, we went to Lowe's and they said, the guy at the door said, fine, put them there. And when you talked to the manager, he said, no way. You know, so it's, it's real tenuous right now.
I appreciate that and thank you for everything you're doing.
Any additional questions or comments for the dais? Councilmember Rice?
Thank you. Have you guys any conversations with DPW Director Searls about compost? Adding that to our waste management?
We have talked about what we would like to see that, like Ann Arbor does. It, it seemed like it's a bit out of reach for the near future, for sure, but we have definitely brought it up with Mr. Searls, yes.
And then do you have any info on your website or any social media about just home compost?
You know, I think that is one of our posts that we've made, yes, for sure. We definitely encourage that and we have a handout with that on there as well, like how to do it. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you guys' efforts, for sure. I do want to make one comment and this comment is to the city manager that this is like the third or fourth time we've now heard that city entities are not being allowed to present at the farmer's market at the rate at which they would like to present. I feel very strongly that that is not appropriate considering that we fund the farmer's market. So we'll address that sometime. That's all. Thanks.
Any additional comments, questions from the dais? Thank you all. I appreciate your time this evening and your, and your leadership and service on the Environmental Commission.
Thank you.
It's noted and very much appreciated. Have a wonderful evening. Well, we're going to proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any council member or citizen, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. It was requested in advance of tonight's meeting by the city manager that Agenda Item C-23-159 be removed, added to new business and then postponed to our next regular meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move.
Moved by Gierba, seconded by Seale. So 23-159 will appear now as the first item under new business. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come to unfinished business, Item 23-120, ordinance number 856, to define, permit and regulate accessory dwelling units, ADUs. This is a motion to postpone or not to postpone the second reading and adoption to August 7th, 2023.
Move to postpone.
Moved by Gierba to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Mr. Harrington, do you care to make a very brief comment?
At their July, sorry, excuse me, June 28th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission held a discussion on whether or not they fully understood all aspects of the ordinance. It was evident in that discussion that they had not, so they would like to review the ordinance again in their July 26th meeting, which would be back and done in time, provided they provide action on it for hearing at the August, sorry, August 7th council meeting.
Very good. Councilmember Gierba is the liaison of the Planning Commission. Anything you'd like to add?
Concur with Mr. Harrington's statement.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the dais? Any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Dillon, to postpone to a date certain of August 7th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, Item 23-122, Bellatoris Phase 3 Final PUD. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington and to approve with conditions or not to approve the final PUD for Bellatoris Phase 3.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gierba, simply to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Mr. Harrington, would you like to begin?
Absolutely. As you may remember back from the May meeting when this was originally heard, the issue surrounds, at least my understanding, the remaining issue surrounds a sidewalk on the western side of Maple Road that was not originally part of the preliminary PUD plan, was not added by the Planning Commission and then was considered by the city council at their last meeting. It was your request that the applicant perform a feasibility study, which both our staff engineer and our consultant engineer who submitted a memo on it and is present tonight. Essentially, the feasibility study showed that it would involve substantial site changes. It's not as simple as just adding a, you know, a piece of pavement. You'd have to shift the entirety of the site, including sewer line that's already placed, including lots that have already been designed and monitored and staked. So it's a substantial change. It's not as easy as just adding a new pathway. It would result in a major PUD amendment, which would have further implications for the city as well. So it's staff's opinion that it is not feasible at this time. It is absolutely something we consider in all of our development reviews going forward. It is part of our site plan review process that was recently adopted and amended for this in the last calendar year. So it is our recommendation that you move forward adopting it with conditions as attached.
Very good. Other questions for Mr. Harrington? I'll begin with Mr. Seale.
I didn't get a chance to get out there and take a look, but there was some indication that there's a provision for crosswalk at both the north and the south end of this development. Is that correct?
I'm familiar with the crosswalk at the north end, but is there one at the south as well? Yes, I see that both the applicant and our consultant engineer.
Would the applicant's consultant like to come to the podium and address that for the record and then remain at the podium in the event that there are other questions best addressed by, by his entity?
Good evening. Ted Hirsch with Midwestern Consulting. And to answer your question, yeah, there, there's a crosswalk, a signalized crosswalk to the south and then north near where the entrance is to both Phase 1 and 3 would be.
They're both signaledized or just?
Correct. Both signaledized, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Harrington or for the applicant? Mr. Gierba?
Dylan.
Oh, Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. I read through this. I understand what it is. There's still a safety concern with people crossing the street. And what I'd like to see is if there's any opportunity to put rumble strips or something on the roadway to help slow the traffic down. You've got people coming down that hill at almost 60 miles an hour and they're not going to see a flashing beacon crosswalk till they're up on it. I mean, I, I feel as though we have a duty at this point to, to make sure that people crossing the street are doing it in a safe manner and that traffic is well aware in advance that there could be people crossing the street. So I, I'd like that to be a consideration and also, and I apologize if it's in here, but I know that the mayor has mentioned this in the past, is that I make sure that there is a statement that should a sidewalk be constructed at some point in the future, that the city has no liability in the cost of that. Because I don't want to see another project like Huntington Woods. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Delarco and then Mr. Gierba.
Yeah, I would just like to echo what Mayor Protam Dillon just emphasized, that the issues that we confronted with the residents of Huntington Woods Phase 1 was a long protracted situation that ended up costing the city a fair bit of money that caused us to have to defer and delay capital improvement projects. So I don't want to find us in that situation again. And as, as much as the developer maintains that the preliminary site plan was approved without these considerations, it's, it's, the final site plan is an opportunity to correct deficiencies. I don't want to pass on these problems to a future council, much in the same way that we inherited this oversight historically in the past. So I, I want to make sure that I understand the staff recommendations and the considerations that are being made for this particular development, but in no way, shape or form can the city be held accountable to, to the residents of this particular development for subsidizing entirely providing a sidewalk. I want to make that very clear from here forward.
Very good. Mr. Gierba?
I'm probably going to echo the same thing as my colleagues. What kind of language or where can we put something that makes a statement that should any future sidewalk be requested? It has to be on the backs of the homeowners or whatever easements and things they would have to acquire.
I was just going to add that as, I was going to add that as amended language to the subsequent motion.
Right, I would add that as a condition.
That the city will assume, if in the future a sidewalk is proposed or constructed, the city will not participate in any way with the financing or construction of said sidewalk.
I would just add that one of the reasons why, you know, both Polte's consultant as well as our consultant reviewing Polte's consultant's feasibility study is that there's simply not enough physical space between people's private property and the land. So I mean, I understand the concern, but I also don't necessarily know if that's a feasible thing that's going to happen unless you could get 20 people to give up a slice of their property, which would then have absolute effects on the value of said property too. So I, I understand that aspect and I have no problem putting in a condition as an additional safeguard. I would just like to be somewhat more optimistic that I don't think we're going to run into some of the same issues that we have historically. And like I said, I'd like to emphasize going forward that this is absolutely something staff missed seemingly six or seven years ago when the preliminary was approved, but these are definitely baked into our planning commission review standards. For every site plan, our consultant looks at these, I look at these, our engineer looks at these. So going forward, I don't, I think that this is an anomaly, hopefully of something that used to happen in Saline that will not continue to happen in Saline.
And just referencing the recommendations here, I think that you had from OHM and the other, where it clearly indicated all the deficiencies as recommendations are somehow tied to whatever we put in that contract indicate why the city will not support that kind of a project. I just believe that we need to protect ourselves.
Right, absolutely. I believe that you could cite this report as well as our own, you know, per the reports submitted by Midwest Consulting dated June 16th, 2023, as well as OHM's review of this report, the city shall not be financially, et cetera.
Just out of curiosity, had we done this or had staff made the recommendation at the time, could it have been achieved or is it physically a?
You would have to reconceptualize the entire site, so I can't make that determination. There are other stormwater and engineering considerations that maybe the applicant or OHM could speak to.
I'm glad, whatever we do to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future, because I know that was an issue when this was developed, even for the sidewalk and the trail on the east side of that property, which is the reason why I voted no on the original development. So, thank you.
Any additional comments, questions from the dais? Mr. Seale, before we vote on the motion, acknowledge receipt.
Just a comment. I previously indicated that I would not vote for this proposal, lacking a sidewalk on the west side of Maple Road. I guess what I need to do is change my position, given the facts that Mr. Harrington cites that, you know, it would be a virtual impossibility to construct this sidewalk now, given the state of affairs with the approvals that have been granted, the private property involved, the lift station involved and everything else. So I do intend to change in support of this, but I share my colleagues' great concern that, that in the future, any and all developments must have this kind of sidewalk in place because these sorts of things get inherited later on by the city when low and behold, people move in, they're happy and content with their brand new home and their children all of a sudden come to them and say, Mom, Dad, I want to ride my bike into town to visit with my buddy who goes to school with me. And they realize that there's no sidewalk there, that it's something that they never paid attention to in the whole process of trying to buy a new home. And then they come back here to City Hall and want to know what we're going to do about that. And unfortunately, in this case, there's nothing we can do about it. So I guess I just want to say that hopefully we put safeguards in place so that in the future, this sort of oversight does not occur again. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gierba, seconded by Mayor Protam Dillon to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And now the chair will make a motion to approve with conditions, adding that if a sidewalk is ever proposed for the site, is ever proposed or constructed onsite, the city will not be participating in the planning, design or cost of construction.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Moved by Marl, seconded by Seale. Clerk Royal, did you get that language? Do you want me to repeat it for you?
I said, if a sidewalk is ever proposed, the city will not be?
I said, adding that if a sidewalk is ever proposed or constructed, the city will not be participating in the planning, design or cost of construction. That was seconded by Seale. And I wrote down the language, so if there's still some ambiguity after the meeting, I'm happy to provide it. Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion? Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. It is approved with conditions. We move to new business, Item 23-159. This will be a motion to postpone adoption of the revisions to the fee book to a date certain of July 17th, 2023, noting quickly to the city manager, that gives you and staff ample time to make the revisions that you believe are necessary?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to postpone?
Some move.
Moved by Gierba, seconded by Rice. Is there any additional discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, Item 23-161, award of wastewater treatment rehabilitation project phase 1. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from consultant engineer Brian Rubel and to adopt or not to adopt the resolution to tentatively award construction contract for wastewater system improvements to Cozian.
Kokosian.
Kokosian, Kokosian, in the amount of $70,855,000.
Your honor, would it be appropriate to try and add a clause to that saying, tentatively award a construction contract pending the approval of the, what is that, the state?
The state revolving fund loan. Yes, so technically what you guys are enacting right now is adopting a resolution, a resolution of tentative award, and that's per SRF standards.
So Mr., we could add Mr. Seale's language, but it's not?
It's really articulated in the resolution already. If you are adopting the resolution of tentative award, that's, you are, you're not officially awarding the bid, you're tentatively awarding it and then we have to get the final approval from SRF.
That's the last line upon successful management.
So, Mr. Seale, then, are you amenable to moving the motion as articulated?
Yes, I am.
So you want to acknowledge and to adopt?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gierba. City manager or tool, do you care, again, we discussed, we had a very good discussion, I thought, at our work meeting beginning at 6:00 PM, but do you want to provide an obligatory comment for the public record?
Yes, again, just the city received two bids, both were highly competitive, both scored particularly well on our responsible contractor policy. Ultimately, Kokosian was both the higher scoring on our responsible contractor policy and the low bidder. Moving forward, the next steps in the process are to finalize the loan documents with the state of Michigan for the state revolving fund and move forward this project. Tentatively, we have this fall marked as the start of the construction season and it's approximately a three-year project timeline.
Very good. Mr. Briggs, anything you'd like to add?
A lot of this stuff.
Okay, any comments or questions, any additional comments or questions, I should say, from the council dais? No? If there's no discussion, then we do have a motion on the floor moved by Seale, seconded by Gierba, to acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, six to zero. We move on to our final action item of the evening, which is Agenda Item 23-162, iron filter media replacement and repair. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Superintendent Briggs and to approve or not to approve the bid from Fedewa Incorporated to replace a filter media, paint the exterior, repair interior plumbing, paint the interior as needed and replace the filter media in the iron filters at the water treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $530,000.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge and to approve. Moved by Gierbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seale. I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Rice. Mr. Briggs, do you care to make a brief statement? It's pretty self-explanatory, but we welcome some remarks to the record.
It is pretty self-explanatory. The iron filters need to be rehabbed about every 18 to 20 years, and we know the age of these already, and there has been some deterioration to them, and this is just to help maintain our quality of water that we distribute to the public.
Because quality of water is a top priority for our city residents and business owners, assuming this motion passes, when can we expect to have the repair or the new, yeah, the new materials in place and operating effectively for our community?
This is planned to occur begin end of August, first of September, to start the work, and it'll probably take several weeks to accomplish.
So a pretty quick turnaround?
Yes.
Very good. Other questions for Superintendent Briggs? Councilmember Rice and then Mr. Gierbaugh.
In not knowing a ton about water treatment, will this help with some of the clients that we receive when we talk about hard water in the city? We receive a lot of comments.
No, the hard water is directly tied to the reverse osmosis, part of the water treatment. This is the iron removal, which we don't want iron going to the reverse osmosis membranes because it'll mess with them and make them less operative.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Gierbaugh?
Do you anticipate any interruption in service or anything while this happens?
No, hopefully we'll be at the point in time where we have less demand, obviously, and these filters will be done one at a time, so they won't all go out of service at one time. We should be able to maintain sufficient water quality and content to the city with two filters at a time running.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion? There is none, but there is a motion moved by Gierbaugh, seconded by Seale, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is on-street parking enforcement. Who wanted this?
It's all me.
Oh, these are all?
Yeah, just defer everything to Councilmember Gierbaugh.
All three, are you, Mr. Gierbaugh?
Pretty much.
Okay, why don't you start with on-street parking?
I'll take curbside isn't mine, that's someone else's.
Okay.
On-street parking enforcement, as you know, when we've gone through the idea of parking, we have a situation where we can't necessarily enforce the parking related to how long cars and things have been parked. Recently, there's been a number of vehicles, namely commercial vehicles, other private vehicles, mobile homes, those type of things that have been parked in the street for weeks at, for over weeks at time. You can tell it because we haven't been able to clean the street around them, garbage, all kinds of materials such as trees and things, tree branches, leaves, all that. I would like to see us at least address some way of handling it. Other communities do deal with on-street parking enforcement by requiring rotation or certain hours during the week where you can't be parked overnight or some of those issues. My biggest concern has been the issue of leaving cars abandoned in front of homes where they end up not being moved or changed. And, you know, we had that similar situation with when there's snow or trying to clean the streets, so whatever we can do to move forward on that. I thought that at one time we did, you can tag the cars, but we can't really do anything. Or I mean, what was going to happen was I think Chief Razdick was going to look into it a little bit more to see what we have because it is more of a code and street, maybe...
Correct me if I'm wrong, the standard now is 48 hours.
No, actually, which is the problem. So we have a lot of problems with the zoning end of things too, especially when something's on a public street, but it's a zoning code. Well, zoning is your property.
Right.
Well, if it's not, it's on a public street, so in a private development, it might work, but on public streets, we have a real hard time pinning it down, and the language is pretty vague. It says storage. So I've been trying to enforce storage as if you leave it there for more than 24 hours, you're storing it. It's fundamentally, you're using our street as a parking lot, you're not using it to bring it between one location or another. So it definitely needs to be changed. In talking with our attorney O'Jack, who's our prosecuting attorney, there's a way we can do it, we just need to move it out of zoning, and we need to move it into regular traffic enforcement. It's a relatively easy code right to make. And then City Manager O'Toole had some ideas about limiting hours in which you could park, so no parking between, of like recreational vehicles, for example, between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, well, that would deter a lot of them. And since officers are on patrol, unlike code enforcement 24/7, it'd be relatively easy to enforce in that respect as well.
So I would assume there would be no objection from the dais with proceeding with the appropriate ordinance change. Can that be added to the, an upcoming agenda of the Code Review Committee with a subsequent recommendation to be made to City Council in August or September?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, is everybody good with that?
I can, Mr. Seale.
Yep, let me jump to Councilmember Rice, who had her hand up first, and then I'll double back to Councilmember Seale.
A little clarification, if you don't mind. Are we, are we talking about if you're parked in front of your own home with your own vehicle?
So mine, I guess from a code enforcement, from a safety, from an aesthetic perspective, that a concern that comes from the Community Development Department is primarily recreational vehicles. I'm not talking about cars as much as I'm talking about your pontoon boat that sits on a trailer or your motorhome that some family member might be staying in. You know, there are provisions for you to have those on your property already, so at least from my perspective, it doesn't need to be taking up room in the street, especially when there are a lot of kids in Saline, or there are some areas where there aren't sidewalks, as we've discussed earlier, and things like that. So my main focus with the ordinance would be more towards the recreational vehicles, but there, we could equally as, as equally as easily write in provisions for regular parking of non-recreational vehicles.
Yeah, to sort of double back or piggyback, excuse me, on a point that Mr. Gierbaugh made, I think probably the broader or the more important issue is recreational vehicles. But I have observed problems with people parking their cars in front of their homes or in the vicinity for protracted periods of time. And as he indicated, when we have inclement weather like snowstorms, that greatly diminishes our ability to clear the street, to properly plow and salt, and in better weather periods like summer, spring, and fall, it also inhibits our ability to successfully clear and sweep that street, which we are required to do with our, based upon our stormwater permits.
Right, absolutely. I would just say we could have two different standards. You could have one for regular vehicles and then one for recreational vehicles. I would say that the issue with protracting, so a 48-hour one, is that in theory, you would have to have monitored and like have evidence that it really was there for 48 hours. And when you're doing parking enforcement, that can be kind of tricky, but we might be able to do that with some other things that we're looking for.
Well, I think if we're trying to solve the issue relative to inclement weather and sweeping specifically, that comes down to can we identify specific times then associated with those activities? And I think that is something at a staff level, we can talk internally about whether there are parameters specifically around times associated with those events that we can reference. Broader issues of protracted parking on street by regular vehicles, it's just going to be a hard issue to tackle.
Right.
Yeah, and I would be fully against an ordinance that took away the opportunity, you know, we're talking about a city that has no transportation options other than to have your own personal vehicle. With the economy, most people of adult age within the household are working currently, so cars are coming in and out of driveways, it's just easier to have some cars on the street. I live on North Ann Arbor Street, you can't park on North Ann Arbor Street, so if you live near a side street, sometimes you park in front of your neighbor's house, we have lots of neighbors that do that, so I would be vehemently against a ordinance that took away the availability for people to park because of their working, living situations. I do, however, completely agree with, you know, recreational vehicles and vehicles that have been abandoned. Maybe there's some sort of abandoned vehicle laws or something.
Right, we, I believe there's a definition that already exists for that, but we could bolster the definition or...
Mr. Seale, it seems like we're moving in the direction of consensus to send this to the Code Review Committee. Do you care to make additional comment or ask a question before we transition to the next discussion item?
These visits to places like we just did in Germany provide not only great beer and great pretzels, but some good ideas too. And we pulled into a parking lot where they had it posted for two-hour parking, and I said, how do they enforce that here in Germany? And he said, like this, and he pulled out this little 24-hour clock, and he dialed the time that he actually parked his vehicle and placed it on his dashboard. So it was like 2:00 PM, and there was two-hour parking, and I said, so if they come here and at 4:00 PM and they see this two-hour, you get a ticket, right? And he said, right. I said, well, what's to keep you from putting 2:30 on there when you park at 2:00 PM to get another half hour? He said, because if they come here at 2:15 and it's marked at 2:30, then they assume I've been here for over 24 hours, so they give me a ticket anyway.
Interesting.
So, so I don't know, that might be something we'd have to have enacted at a state level, but it sounded to me like a good way to work around what I view as a buffoonish ruling by the Supreme Court about marking tires being a seizure of property. So I don't know, it might be something to consider or propose to somebody at the state level in conversation.
Very good. Any additional comments before we transition? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. Just quickly, I wanted to add to the conversation that street sweeping is actually becoming an issue with cars being parked. There are several streets, mine being one of them, where we get flooding now because the grates are now being covered, and so they're not sweeping those, and it's becoming an issue. There's a lot of areas in which I see this happening, so I do want to see something happen there. I understand, trust me, I'm in a family with a lot of vehicles, and we do the car shuffle all the time, so having cars on the street, I don't think is a problem. It's the length of time in which cars are there. If you're going to be parking your car on the street for two weeks at a time, I think that's going to need some sort of a permit process or something like that because it really is creating some issues in areas.
Very good. Okay, we look forward to hearing more on this issue and receiving a recommendation from Code Review. Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh and Mr. Harrington. Who added curbside pickup ordinance?
That would be me.
Okay?
So with the site plans that were approved, as well as the special land uses for many of the marijuana dispensaries, one of the stipulations was that they could not engage in curbside pickup up until the city council enacted a ruling or a standard, one way or the other. The way our ordinance is currently written, according to our planning consultant and even my best interpretation of it, is that vehicle uses ancillary to the main use of whatever it is are permitted. So in theory, curbside pickup would be covered by that, but since it's a specific expression we added or a specific condition we added to their site plans and their SLUs, they're not currently enabled to engage in that. Both of them would really like to be able to offer curbside pickup to their customers. I would just like a direction on this so I can kind of close the loop on those site plans that we approved. I'm rather ambivalent one way or the other about curbside pickup. I don't think it makes a huge difference. As a point of note, most other cities don't regulate it as an action, they don't choose in favor or against it, they just allow it. There's not even like a percentage of parking that it's allowed to take up. So most cities go on the lower end of regulation, other cities regulate more, but yeah.
I wouldn't say no outright, but I don't have enough data to justify making a change. So what I would need from any and all enterprises, specifically cannabis retailers who believe this is imperative, is some sort of narrative or explanation as to why it is so critical for their business's success. And additionally, if it were permitted, how is it going to be managed in an appropriate way as to not detract or deter from the broader community's quality of life or adversely impact adjacent properties? That's what I would need.
Absolutely.
Okay, any additional thoughts? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. You know, at this point, I'm not a for or against the issue. Well, I would say for me, it's not a top priority issue for the city at this point. I think we've just brought a few other issues to your office and to Code Review that I think kind of are a little bit higher on the totem pole for things. And so I'd like to table it at this point and see what we can. The other issue that I have is understanding, we have two dispensaries right now that are two different models. One is a standalone business, which is their own property. The other one shares parking lot with several other businesses, and understanding what that would look like in the curbside where you have other businesses in that same area. So I think that it's more than just a yes or no type situation, and so I think it's going to require a lot of thought, and I just don't know that right now is the time for the city to put the resources into it.
Any additional thoughts? Councilmember Rice?
I want to counterpoint that just slightly. I agree with everything that you said, with the exception of if they can provide us information that shows that this will like greatly impact their business, like they're going to do a lot more business by having this, I would like to keep businesses and keep people in their current retail slots. So yeah, if someone can provide us some data points that say, hey, like if Rush says, hey, our other store, you know, has this much business in curbside, it would really help our business, I would be more inclined to vote yes for it. I don't, the other thing that I don't necessarily agree with, and this is kind of why I'm saying this is, you know, these might be time-sensitive things, you know, this is the first year of their business, they've gotten six months into it thus far. I don't think it's necessarily like something we need to discuss tomorrow because I don't think it's going to impact their businesses right away, but if it's something that's going to impact their business where they say a year from now, hey, we've done this much business and we could do way more and we'd be able to pay our rent, we'd be able to stick around longer, I would like to see those data points, and I would like to help the businesses. But again, lots of information that we need, I haven't completely heard all of that. So I'd like to see that start to be gathered throughout the year.
Any additional comments from the dais? Mr. Seale?
During COVID, we allowed curbside pickup at some of the pizza establishments and some of the food establishments uptown, and we still have, I guess what you regard as curbside pickup, at a place like Tim Hortons where you have people queuing up McDonald's, people queuing up in their cars to pick up food or drinks and so on, and sometimes even coming out into the public street like they do on Kevlin Drive there at Tim's. So I think we need to be careful how we approach this.
Aside just to make a clear point, since we're on the same page, I think we all are, but so per our code, those are all allowed. We're not going to stop McDonald's or Tim Hortons because of the nature of the way our codes are in. It's only specifically for these dispensaries where you've made it a condition that they cannot have it until the city came with a more formal ordinance. And time pressing, like I said, I'm bringing forward the issue because I was asked to buy these two businesses to close the loop in good faith on their, on their site plans, but I completely understand the council's comments.
Obviously, there's no guarantees, but why don't you reach out to them and ask for some additional data points and a narrative and bring it back, and we'll see how council feels.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Gierbaugh, did you add unlicensed vehicles?
Yeah, and the reason I brought this up is that, I mean, we have one property in particular and a couple of other ones where vehicles are unlicensed. And when you look at our fax document on our own, on our own website, it says no motor vehicles that are unlicensed can be stored on that property. So this example and where this is happening, I would like to see us develop our policy to be more clear that this is an issue and a concern. I know Mr. Harrington has been working on this with Jesse O'Jack and trying to deal with this. I just want to make sure that what we're putting out there on our website applies to every property in our city, or is it only residential when I read this? And I'll just read it here, it just says, can I keep a vehicle in my driveway or backyard if it doesn't have a current license plate on it, and am I just waiting to get rid of or sell it? No motor vehicle may be stored outside unless it is in operating condition and currently licensed. Also, motor vehicles may not be parked on the lawn extension, which is that area of the driveway approach or lawn between the sidewalk and the road. If we can enforce that, then we need to take this down, but I'm trying to figure out, because this one example of where this continually happens, there's at least three cars sitting on one semi-residential, commercial, professional business, and the other one's on a corner where it's a lot, where it has numerous vehicles all the time. And whatever we need to reinforce this, because I feel like we've been talking about this for over a year, and I guess some of the options we looked at potentially because of non-conforming and issues that former councils did many, many, many decades ago may not be able to be reversed, we need to figure out how to plug this.
Yeah, so just to clarify, the one, if I, if I think I know the property in which you're speaking of, it would be covered by Article 6 of the zoning code, section 6.08, which is automobile-related uses. So in the case of automobile repair and or service stations, inoperative or unlicensed vehicles should not be stored outside for more than seven days. Such storage shall not occur in the front face of the building too. So there's two aspects there, and since, we can go into specifics later, but the one specific lot you're talking about is essentially exercising the loophole of the word "front face." And there are concerns from our attorney as well about non-conforming uses, so it's kind of an ongoing, it's a moving puzzle, in other words.
Does the ordinance need to be revised?
I don't know if revising the ordinance actually negates the issue because of the existence of non-conforming, of non-conformity essentially. So there's a, there's a way to do it, it's a moving puzzle, I'm still kind of brainstorming[1718.41] a moving puzzle. I'm still kind of brainstorming ways to potentially address the issue, as well as multiple other issues that aren't in plain sight but are also known issues with the law, so.
But in this situation, when you said seven days in front, so a car gets set in front that's unlicensed, what if it exceeds those seven days? Or maybe I misunderstood how you...
Yeah, that is correct. So it could, so a single car, but they could rotate different cars, so if it's not the same car, based on how the license is written, or based on how the ordinance is written, that might potentially be an inroad there, is you don't use, no matter how many cars, it doesn't matter, if you rotate them only for seven days, that might be another way to go about it.
Currently, there's a vehicle that's been sitting there for almost four months that has licenses invalid.
Okay.
The tag has expired since February. I just wanted to know if we needed to do something as a policymaking body to provide or have you instruct to do something different, so whatever we need to do and bring it back.
Right, so I guess I didn't, maybe I didn't understand, seven days meaning they can have a car without a license plate there for seven days. It doesn't mean that it's only, it's been expired for seven days, but you're saying the tag has been...
Tag and the car, well, there's two of them there that have, one doesn't have a license plate, the other one has a tag that expired in February, and they've been there for, yeah, since February.
Absolutely. So I will follow up with code enforcement, and we'll get on that this weekend.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, this nuance to that situation applies to this particular property in a commercial, quasi-commercial site, but in general, for street parking, for residential parking, for apartment complexes...
For any other commercial property?
If the tag, if the car isn't licensed and properly registered and tagged, we have the authority to tow that vehicle.
Not off of private property, but we would then be able to do a courtesy notice civil infraction process. So we can't tow it off your property unless you got up to the point of an abatement, which would be a court order at that point.
But if it's on the street, it's police enforcement.
Yes. Street is a little different.
Okay, understood.
We'll transition now to reports and announcements. Mr. CEO, do you have any reports or announcements?
Just to amplify what you already said about the trip to Germany, the Celine Lindenberg group had a wonderful trip to Germany for two weeks, end of June, and just to report that we celebrated our twentieth anniversary of the twinning relationship with that city. It was a wonderful trip. There were a number of first timers on the trip, which I was pleased to see, and there were a number of people who showed up at the initial reception who had been there for the original signing of the twinning, to include our former mayor Gretchen Driscoll and our former councilperson Alicia Ping. So it was heartening to see the number of faces there that we did, and I'm sure that everybody that went had a very good time.
Very good. Mayor Protem Dillon, any reports or announcements?
No.
Mr. Girbaugh?
I just want to let everyone know that the painting is beginning at Rentschler Farm. You'll notice that significant paint is missing off of the house right now. We're hoping in the next month or so to have that done, the big barn and the salvage barn painted, and then after that will be the depot, so looking forward to seeing that. And I also want to make a plug for our August 11th and 12th yard sale at the Rentschler Farm. There's still booths available, and looking forward to have you all come and attend.
Very good. Mr. Del Arco?
I don't have any.
Councilmember Rice?
Nothing for me.
I have just one for the city manager that perhaps she could relay to DPW. I was downtown on Saturday and Sunday, walking my dog, and noticed that a number of our municipal shrub beds could use some TLC. So if you could pass that along to DPW, that would be great. Some pruning, some weeding, and perhaps, if possible, a little bit of mulch. Maybe some preen would assist with weeding for the ensuing months.
Could I tag on that? Do we anticipate trimming our trees at all? Some of the trees are now starting to hit the buildings.
Which, any specific locations?
Trees uptown, they're starting to get large and whatever. I didn't know what is planned on the, how we're going to maintain those.
I know that we are ongoing with tree trimming and removal, but I can ask what the schedule is for being uptown.
Maybe you could message on all of those items in your weekly communicate on Friday?
Absolutely.
Very good. Yes?
There's just one other thing I wanted to make mention of that we'd bring up during discussion, is that at our last meeting, we had a few people from the public that came and made comments, and a lot of time, the public does not understand that we do not engage in back-and-forth conversation, so we don't answer their questions. What I'm asking is, should this body consider something similar to what the school board does, which is at the next meeting, address, they actually have it as a line item in their agenda, which is reply to public comment from like a previous meeting, so that if there's a statement that needs to be made or such, because sometimes what ends up happening is somebody will make a comment, and I think people feel a little discouraged that it's falling on deaf ears and that they don't get a response from us. And so then we would just sort of be able to have a mechanism to sort of close that loop.
Yeah, I don't have a problem if an individual articulates a question or concern that requires some follow-up and research to report back at the subsequent meeting. I will say that there are numerous occasions where myself as the presiding officer, and this was a practice that was used by my predecessors, Mayor Driscoll, Mayor Little, if a person asks a question and we can answer it in real time, we tend to do that. So there are many occasions where citizens avail themselves of the public comment period, raise a question or concern, and the presiding officer responds and provides them the information that they're requesting. To your point, though, if there's something a bit more complex or multi-dimensional that requires some follow-up, I think it would be fine to address that at the subsequent meeting.
I appreciate that. Specifically, that was in regard to, there were some questions regarding Old Creek and water shut off and such. So if there's a way in which we can either making a public statement and then rereading that during the next council meeting so that that information, because, I mean, you don't necessarily want to wait the two weeks, but at least then it's also out there.
Let's set our next agenda meeting, play around with some language that could perhaps be inserted, and that it provides us an opportunity at every meeting to follow up on concerns if they were articulated at the previous meeting. Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, we come to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required, just, excuse me, to state his or her name and address for the record. You will have three minutes.
My comment is on the electric charging stations, and my concern was that we apparently charge at no cost to the electric car owner, and yet I'm still paying for gas. I know that it was said that we had some federal money coming in or some grant money, but that is going to be paying for the charge stations or areas. So I really have a problem, and I think taxpayers have a problem when there's, someone buys a $40,000 electric car and they get to have it freely charged at charging stations, and yet the people with the gasoline cars will have to pay the full price. I would like to know what additional municipalities or governmental units are providing free charging for the constituents that pull up and charge. And I also would like to know how much it's possible, how much is a full charge on a car, because there's got to be a meter going someplace, and that adds up. And I know that at one time, they were saying the merchants liked it because it brought business into town. I don't believe that. I believe they're coming and charging up their car. And the cost of the stations of replacing them is fine with governmental, public funds, but I have a concern when they are charging with public funds when those of lesser revenue is not able to purchase an electric car. Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments from those in the audience this evening? The record reflect, there are none. Clerk Roode, do we receive any comments in advance of tonight's meeting, which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time?
No, I'll just respond briefly then to Mrs. Hess. We do not have a final recommendation from staff or from the Environmental Commission regarding electric vehicle charging stations. However, new technology, additional locations, and payment for said service is being explored and will be part of the final report that is issued to City Council for consideration and action, hopefully before the end of the third quarter of this year. If there's nothing further to be brought before City Council, please note our upcoming meetings. I believe regarding boards and commissions, Mr. Girbaugh, Mr. Harrington, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Planning Commission meeting for the 12th is canceled. Is that right?
That is correct.
Very good. So please strike that from your, the list of upcoming meetings.
Code Review is still meeting this month?
Yes, now that we have business to discuss, finally.
Okay, great, okay.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting at 8:15 p.m.
So moved.
Moved by CEO. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say avert. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
All right, see you, Mayor.
See you. Have a great night. Thanks for coming.
Good night, Zach.
Bye, Zach. Be careful.